That's a crab mallet.
That's hard to roll over crab.
All right, let's get started before we get too crowded. We can finish this up and then order crabs and go skydiving. So, all right, can we have a roll call, please, Judy?
Okay, Vice Mayor Offenrich.
Present.
Commissioner Braun.
Present.
Commissioner Warren.
Here.
Commissioner Pearson.
Present.
You do have a quorum present.
Thank you. Mayor Marion is excused tonight, he's working and can't make it. So will you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, during the normal course of the night when Mayor Marion's here, he'll always do a prayer at this time. Tonight, we want to recognize a few moments of silence for the passing of a man who was very much involved in this community. He served on several boards, I'll try to name them all. He was president and a member of the Historical Society. He was a planning and zoning member, planning and zoning chairman, a commissioner, a mayor. He was involved in this community through the church and quite a bit. Tom Mummy, our former mayor, has passed away. Tom, well, not too long ago, moved down to Florida, like a lot of us old people do, to get down to the warm weather. So I hope Tom, I hope the ending came for him warm and easy because he had a tough time. But he served this community in more ways than I probably mentioned in tonight and has a lasting impact. There's a really nice picture of him and Judy Cox and former Governor Bob Ehrlich and his wife Kendall downstairs in the foyer when you come in. So we want to recognize Tom and all he did for this community, and he is surely going to be missed. Okay, we'll move on forward.
Alan, I did want to say that the reason that Mayor Marion is not with us is his flight was canceled on the West Coast, so he really regretted not being able to be here.
Okay, poor guy, he's stuck on the West Coast. Poor guy.
I was gonna say, hopefully he's done.
Can we, do we have a flat Travis that can be present?
I just gave it to Trey.
Love hearing that. All right, executive session report, Calvin, do you have any executive session reports tonight?
No.
Okay, any public presentations? Nope, okay. Business meeting, we have resolution 2019-04, the fiscal year 19, budget and collection rates. Calvin?
All right, so what I'd like to do first is just, we, the elected body already established the rates, the tax rate, which is what was needed to be done. That was all done back in April. As you recall, the elected body did lower the tax rate to provide some relief for our residents. We're gonna talk a little bit more about that when we actually get into the resolution, but the first thing I wanted to do is we technically need to ratify the actual budget paperwork itself. This is a budget that we set out a couple months ago to continue to do what we've always done, which is to hold the line on expenses while also investing money wisely in infrastructure. And you're gonna see some examples of some of the things that we were able to do in the budget. In general numbers, the assessed value of properties in the town of Rising Sun, if the town had not lowered the real estate tax rate, the town would have received roughly $936,000 of real estate tax. By lowering the real estate tax lower, taking a penny off it from 48 cents per hundred dollars to 47 cents per hundred dollars, the real estate tax rate, the yield, the expected yield went from 936 to roughly 917. For budgeting purposes, as you guys know that have been here for a while, I don't ever budget 100% of the real estate, projected real estate tax. So you're gonna see tonight's budget is based upon realizing 903,000, roughly 903,000 of the 917,000 dollar number. There's another couple interesting things that related to all of this. I want to show you something in terms of the assessed values and what happens to the assessed values in the town of Rising Sun over the years. This here, what I'm showing you is, basically these columns represent, every year we get notice from the Department of Assessment of what the total assessed value of properties in the town of Rising Sun are expected to be. So you can see I have data here going all the way back to 2005 in terms of it recognizing, if you looked at this line here, 117,247 million, I'm sorry, 117,247,591 dollars of assessed value of all the properties back in 2005. This year, going to 2019, it's projected to be 195,155,219 dollars. What I was showing in this column is the difference from year to year of the change in the assessed value of the properties and then the percentage change of the assessed values of properties. And the interesting thing is, when the state sends you the documents, we usually get them around March of every year. When the next year's numbers come out, they actually give you an update of what they projected it to be the year, when you got the notice in the first year. The second year you get it, they give you an update of what it actually ended up being. So what I'm showing you over here is the state, if you look at five years, the last five years of state projections, the state has been pretty accurate in the projection of what the real estate tax value will be. And so that was part of the calculations that I was doing for the budget was, and the reason why I'm giving you all this is, you know, the town is still not out of the woods financially. We've been able to hold the line despite a lot of obstacles over the years, and we've talked about that a lot. But in addition to doing the budget, I also want to make sure that we don't rely on someone else's estimations, and if they are wrong, we end up having a problem. Because as you know, we typically balance our budgets from anywhere from a dollar, you know, perceived being positive to a dollar to sometimes 22, I think last year we balanced it at $22,000 projected. So I don't want us to be relying on that and the state, relying on the state's assessment and they get an anomaly that's wrong. So that's why I did five years' worth of estimates to make sure of what the number would actually be if they were the percentage off that they have been over the last five years. So as you can see, over the last five years, they've only been off by roughly $56,661 of assessed value. So when you're talking about millions, that's pretty accurate. So that gives me a comfort level that when we're gonna rely on these real estate revenues that we can reasonably rely upon what the state is projecting it to be. So kudos to the state for doing a pretty good job of being accurate with the numbers all the time. So getting into the actual budget itself, I'm gonna start with the general fund, and as we've done in the past, these documents are massive data documents, and there's a lot of information on them. We have not been a community that just does a couple simple, you know, a couple pages of numbers. We really tried to get very accurate in tracking all of our revenues and all of our expenses, and I think that's proven to be very beneficial in how tight our budgets have been over the past couple of years. It makes it a lot easier to be that tight. So at the end of the day, we have balanced this year's general fund budget with a surplus, projected surplus of $15,412.56 is what the budget is balanced to the positive on. Nearly all of the accounts are revenue neutral with a couple exceptions in here. You have your general services, there's really no surprises in the general services. You can see those revenues are projected, last year's revenues were projected at $355,000. This year, they're projected to be $378,000. That's not always a reflection of increases in real estate, it's a reflection of things that we purchased in the past or done in the past we no longer need to do. So it trickles down to all of the fund balances. Expense-wise, the general administration doesn't really have a whole lot of big expenses in it, that's sort of the catch-all for all the little, the things that the other departments don't pick up. In other words, if we're gonna be paving streets, you're not gonna see that in the general administration, you're gonna see it on the streets and sidewalks. If we're doing something with the police department, it's gonna be in the police department's area. So you typically don't get a whole lot of fluctuation. One of the things that we are doing this year that has enabled us to lower the taxes while at the same time invest money in other areas is we are now going to be bringing all of the town's finances back in-house. The town of Rising Sun will now provide the staffing to do all the finances. We'll still have an independent auditor reviewing the books, but we will no longer be using a third party to basically do the general entries and the ledgers and stuff like that. We're gonna do that internally. We did have to make some expenditures to be able to do that, one-time expenditures, one of them being some financial software that we had to bring in to be able to do it. So the police department, to get into some of the areas that the elected body has talked about over the last couple of months, of things that they wanted to see happen, if you look up the police department in row 142, if you remember the red numbers on the left-hand side give you the row to follow, if you go all the way over to the right-hand side, you see that there's $12,000 in capital outlay and upgrades of equipment. That reflects the chief's recent request to have two speed cameras or signs to be mounted in different places in town to be able to show people when they are speeding. So there's $12,000 set aside to be able to make that purchase. The other thing that is reflected in the police department budget is, we have struggled in the past, as we've talked about, at being competitive with other police departments in terms of being able to secure good candidates. So it was suggested, I was asked probably about a year ago to work towards trying to raise the base pay of our police officers, the starting salary and the base pay. So this budget, and working with the chief, this budget does include, and across-the-board, 5% increase for all of the officers to get them more in line with what other officers of the same tenure would be doing in Cecil County and the other communities, so we were able to do that. Here's where I want to highlight something, you know, one would say to themselves, well, you lowered the taxes, but yet you're doing all these other things, how are you able to do it? And a lot of it has to do with just reprioritizing where we're spending money and finding cheaper ways to be able to do it and more efficient ways to do it. And so bringing the accounting and financial services back in-house is a huge financial savings. So when you look at basically row 197, although it's not numbered, you will see that the expected expenses in the police department last year were $609,710, and this year, it only went up about $3,000. And that's the reappropriation. So in doing that, we were able to get more equipment for the police officers and then also bring their base pay up at the same time. So that's one of the significant things in the police department. Code enforcement, there's really no significant changes in there. The one thing that I did take out of the budget because we, as we've talked about, we're, it's not that we're in a state of flux, we're on the verge of a lot of different things happening in the town. We've seen economic revitalization in the Main Street area, we've seen building permits for new houses to be built, we have finished our water and sewer projects, which are driving more people to want to connect, it's driving people to want us to consider extending water lines. It's giving us a lot of flexibility that we're sort of banking on our hard work in the past and our expectation of success, and we're sort of banking on those things and to, I don't want to, it's not a matter of gambling with anything, it's just a matter of being aggressive about prognosticating what's gonna happen. We've removed the code officer from the budget that we used to always carry every year. We're gonna go one more year. In all likelihood, I don't think that the housing demand is gonna pick up that much over the next year that it would require us to get a code officer. The good thing is, in doing that, that's what enabled us to pick up basically the $25,000 of financial software to be able to bring the finances back in-house. So I'm trying to show how you sort of trade some things here and there. That's a one-time $25,000 expenditure. So next year, we'll be able to roll that placeholder, if you will, back into the budget for staffing in the future. And so carrying it in the budget this year, I think it's worth the effort to remove the code ops, the additional code ops are out of the budget, in order to prioritize some other items. So that's a significant change, and you can see in part that's why last year's code department was projected to be about $161,827 of expenses, and it dropped down to $105,000 of expenses. In the public works department, there's really no changes in public works. That's, you know, public works is not where we pave streets or do anything in park and recreation. Public works is, again, sort of a little bit of a catch-all for the items that don't specifically fall within those other departments. So there's no real changes in public works. Streets and sidewalks, there are some big changes in streets and sidewalks. You're gonna see loan proceeds for street repaving. We did pay off one of our street loans last year, so we have money to be able to take on roughly another $500,000 street repaving project. Right now, one of the items on the list is Wilson Road. Part of doing, Wilson Avenue, yeah. Part of doing Wilson Avenue is to also relocate the water line in Wilson Avenue, which those expenses are gonna come up under the water portion of the proprietary fund. But we don't want to pave Wilson Avenue and still have that fire hydrant sitting out in the travel lane like it is down there. And it's an undersized line, so since we're gonna be in there doing a lot of significant road restoration in there to dig up some of the areas in there, it makes sense to upsize the water line, not only get the hydrant out of the street, but extend it down closer to the park down there, Koch Street down there. So this budget includes basically $575,000 of street repaving, which covers, you know, materials, the contractor and the engineering inspections to go along with that. So to show you the numbers, how it works, because we would be taking a loan out for these items, on line 357, you see loan proceeds. So that's where we're showing that we will receive $575,000 roughly. We don't have the final prices, but that's what we're budgeting for. We would receive $575,000 of loan proceeds, and then when you go down to line 358, you see the contracted services, which is the $500,000 of the expense.
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
Is this the first NBRS loan or the second NBRS loan that we paid off?
The first one, yep. And actually, let me correct myself. It's not a paving loan that got paid off, it's one of the vehicle loans that got paid off, one of our original financing loans that we were paying roughly like $40,000 a year in financing. So we're converting that $40,000 into a $50,000 a year payment because we don't need to purchase vehicles, you know, in the near future. And we're gonna have, one of our other loans is, and to explain this to you, we base the loans on the life expectancy of the vehicles and then what the lender will give you a loan for. So typically, our vehicles, the police cars and all, and I might not be completely accurate on this, but anywhere from three to five years is what we finance the police vehicles.
This is the first of the lease experts leases?
Yes.
So that, at the time, they would only give us four years on the police cars?
Yep.
And now I think we do them five years because they...
Well, my point is, we also bought construction equipment with that first one, and those construction vehicles were seven...
Seven years.
...and seven years out. So it is, we have paid those police cars off, so that loan payment drops down significantly in this year's budget cycle also. So again, that's freeing us up to redirect those monies into financing to repave some streets. And let's talk a little bit about, I think it's always important to let our residents know the thought process behind it. As a general estimate, if you were to pave Queen Street from Main Street out to Walnut Street, you might be spending pretty close to $100,000 in doing that by the time you're all done. And if you try to bankroll that every year, you're taking $100,000 out of your real estate tax that's coming in, and you're spending that $100,000 at one time. However, if you take the same concept of the $100,000 and spread it out over a 10-year loan, which is the life expectancy of the street, you could now turn a $100,000 paving project into whatever, a $500,000, $400,000 paving project by spreading it out over a period of time. So it just gives you more bang for your buck. And in reality, if we were just paving some of these little streets on a yearly basis, you wouldn't necessarily feel like you're getting ahead as much as if you come in like we've done in the past and pave five or six major roads and redid the sidewalks, and then they're good for 10 years, and then you focus on another group a couple years later. So the life expectancy on this infrastructure is about 10 years, so it makes sense to finance those things out over a period of time.
And correct me if I'm wrong, we get more value if we do more of it because there's less deployment costs?
Yes, yes. Yeah, I mean, anyone who's in construction could tell you that, you know, there's an upfront mobilization just in the equipment that they have to bring out. So you could, you know, spend $100,000 over a five-year period and pay five mobilization setups of equipment, or you could do it, finance $500,000 in one year's time and only pay that mobilization cost once. So it's all part of how we try to maximize the resources we have to get more bang for our buck.
Calvin, the typical mobilization fee, that's like typically what, 10,000 to 20,000?
Yeah, I mean, Tom, if you wanted to, it's probably as good a number as any.
It depends on the size of the job and what pieces of equipment you need. So I mean, it's all dependent, it's a percentage, but it's usually about 5% or so, and they ask them 5% to 10% upfront.
Yeah. So that is the, also in the streets and sidewalks here, there's two other areas. On line 382, we're continuing to invest money in the actual material of patching and fixing our roads that are not on the list to be, don't need to have a complete redo. And that's something we started doing a couple years ago, where we might pay a contractor $15,000 to come in and do a couple potholes. Now we went out and we purchased the equipment for our public works people to be able to do that themselves, and so now we're able to do a lot more road restoration and patching by only spending $15,000 in the actual material itself and not paying a contractor to do it. So we get a lot more bang for our buck there. The other thing that we have in here is, if you look at line 385, last year we budgeted $5,000 to do sidewalk repairs. Again, that was, that's basically just the concrete cost is what we're looking at there because we're doing it all in-house, we're not paying a contractor to do it anymore. We've now basically tripled that and brought it up to, no, I'm sorry, yeah, we tripled that of, actually four times that, brought it up to $20,000, $20,000 of material costs for sidewalks. So we're throwing more money into the sidewalks in town here also. And again, that's basically the highlights of the streets and sidewalks. Again, all that other stuff is all your standard operating costs to run the town in there.
Calvin?
Yep.
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
Back on the streets and sidewalk, line 389, you've got a note there that it's a new account for street, what's in a large chunk of money, what are we doing there?
Well...
You got something out of alignment. Oh, yeah, your answer.
It's, it is a reappropriation of expenses in the rightful category. The streetlight electric used to be covered in the public works department. And so if you go back, I might have deleted it out of the line item, but we used to carry the electrical cost for lighting the streetlights in the public works department. And I just think it makes sense if somebody, and again, I like to do this so that we can look at our massive operation in bite-sized pieces. And so it becomes, you know, Augie, you remember this because you've been here long enough, we wanted to know what it actually costs to run the police department and what it costs to run sanitation instead of it all being mixed in one pot. So having everything that has to do with streets and sidewalks, which would include the streetlights in that category, gives you an idea of how much it costs to maintain your streets and sidewalks in town, including the illumination of your streets and sidewalks. So that's just re-appropriating that expense to its proper account.
Was it previously the actual under utilities electric? Because I noticed that.
No, utilities electric is the electric for the buildings.
Okay. I know, but was the streetlights previously there? Because of the numbers, otherwise the numbers kind of like don't align. Are you on the same page? Yeah, I am. So the $36,000 in year-to-date actual is against a budgeted utilities electric.
That is a byproduct of things not being put into the right general categories, and that's something that we're looking to clean up because, quite frankly, that's one of the biggest obstacles.
Is that the streetlights?
Yes.
Okay.
A lot of it is probably streetlight costs that got put into there.
Makes sense, okay.
The numbers.
So that's something that Judy and I have been spending a lot of hours on it. You guys know from the past, we at the end of the year spend a lot of time cleaning up general entries to make sure that we're as accurate as possible. Going into solid waste collection, you know, this is all, this is all the actual cost for collecting trash and recyclables, so there's no, we're not making any new expenditures in these categories. So, there's no, we're not making any new expenditures in these categories. So, when you look at the total expenses for solid waste collection, if you go down to line 477, I'm sorry, 467, last year's cost was projected to be $279,826. This year's cost is actually $272,457. That's a byproduct of bringing the financial stuff back in the house. So, you're seeing the trickle-down impacts in all the funds of making basically a business decision on how to change the way we do things here. So, there's really no changes there. Parking recreation, this is another one. There aren't a whole lot of big expenditures in here.
What happened there?
Other than parking recreation is where we also do community activities. Sun Fest, the carolsing, the Christmas tree lighting, all of those items. And these, these, these events are becoming very successful and very popular. And there's an expense associated with, you know, providing those, yeah, providing those things for our residents. So, you can see some increases in there. For instance, under the Fall Fest, we had budgeted $5,000, but it had actually cost us about $10,342 to do the Fall Fest last year. So, this year, we have budgeted $10,000 to do the Fall Fest for next, next year. We, the mayor introduced the idea of the carolsing and the Christmas tree lighting. You would find those expenses under 502. Part of those expenses is under line 502. We went basically from $500, which is what we used to pay for the carolsing out there. It's now we budgeted $5,000 for that. And then, the mayor also has his discretionary fund in which to supple, supplement some of these line items too. And then, he works very hard to get a lot of this stuff donated also, so.
We need another snow machine this year. We didn't have enough snow.
Yeah.
Everybody tried to go to that one side. They loved it.
We got more.
That was a good idea. And plus, it didn't rain this year.
Then on the last page, or actually, not the last page, you get down into the areas of debt service. You start to see the different loans that we have in town. You will see on, it would be the space in between 557 and 558. That's the $50,000 we've set aside for the street repaving that I talked about earlier up in the upper one. We're designating about $50,000. So, when you start again to talk about how things move around, although we budgeted a new $50,000 this year, you can see the expenses last year were projected to be $272. Even though we added a new $50,000 line item, the expense only went up to $292. So, it was only a $20,000 increase because other things are coming off the board.
Now, we haven't put out the loan, who is going to give us these loans yet, right? Okay.
No, we have not. That, what I did this year is, that old proverbial of you were king for a day, all the stuff that you would try to do. There's obviously a lot of money to be spent on our streets and sidewalks in town. And so, this year, what I did is I basically said, we can afford a $50,000 payment. Roughly, how much money would that be in an overall project? And so, we sort of backed into the numbers that way. And then, I'll be working with Tom to try to figure out how we fit that all in, those numbers. Stormwater management, if you remember, we talked about this last year. This is an entirely new fund. We just spent the last year. Under the new EPA and state guidelines, the responsibility for stormwater management is now starting to trickle down to the local level. And it is the textbook definition of an unfunded mandate. But, you know, we're gonna lose that battle complaining about it. So, basically, it's not necessarily new money. We did last year, we sort of, we sort of took some of the monies that we would spend in some of the other departments last year and rationalized what really could be moved over to stormwater. That's the exercise we did last year's budget. So, last year, we basically budgeted $43,944 in expenses. This year, we're $51,595. One of the reasons for the jumps in that is if you look at line 403, and once we, once we ratify this, I'll change the red numbers on the side. When you move everything all around, I didn't go ahead and change the formatting on the numbers to run in sequence like they should. But if you're looking under stormwater management and you look for line 610, underneath it is 403 because I took that out of, it used to be, I believe, in public works is where we did street sweeping. And as Dave, having been familiar with the stormwater management credits that you can get, we can get, we can meet our obligations by the total tonnage of material that we sweep up off the road. So, it only makes sense to put that expense in the stormwater management account because there are reports that you have to fill out when you apply for this stuff. So, I don't want anybody on the other end of these forms getting confused on, well, why is it coming out of this account? So, again, it's just an effort to streamline it and make it more logical. So, that's one of the main reasons for the jump in the expenditures is because there's a new $7,500 cost in there for the street sweeping. It was just moved to that account. Emergency management, to recap this, this is a category that we created when I first came here. All it is is a placeholder. And the reason that we put it there is it makes it a lot easier when the federal government or the state declares a federal disaster, we can get reimbursed for stuff that we do. So, when we start to have those expenses and those costs associated with them, we earmark them into these accounts. In other words, the expenditures for plowing the street wouldn't show up in the streets and sidewalks like they normally would. They would get moved to this account. So, again, if the federal or the state come in to audit your books to see that you properly managed the money that they gave you, it's all in one nice neat location. So, we don't put a lot of money in this, these funds every year. They're just placeholders so that if we have something where it's declared a disaster, we have the accounting setup to do the journal entries to track that. So, again, you can see that we balanced the budget with a $15,412 surplus. To recap, the big, the big expenditures was the street repaving and the loans associated with that, the speed cameras for the police department, a whole lot more money in streets and sidewalk or sidewalk repair, more money in patching streets. So, that's where those numbers are coming from. So, we're in the positive. If there's no further questions, I'll jump into the proprietary fund.
Good.
Just, maybe just to clarify, the speed cameras, you mean speed signs?
Speed signs, yes.
I don't want, you know.
Yes.
Yes, we're not gonna be running.
We are not gonna be running speed cameras.
Yes. I apologize. I'm punch drunk. I'm number, number drunk from all these numbers.
We gotta get some more money first.
On the water side, and this comes out to, this is a discussion that we need to have and it's reflected in our resolution. The town adopted many years ago, which is what you're supposed to do, a rate structure on how you pay for your infrastructure financing. In other words, we don't have, you know, $10 million sitting around to put, you know, put new water lines in, and we sure as heck didn't have $13 million sitting around to build a new wastewater treatment plant. So, you have to take out loans for that. And in order to take out those loans, you have to convince, just like if we personally go to someone to get a home equity loan or a personal loan, you have to show them what your income is before they will approve you for the loan. Well, we have to do the same thing. And the way we have to do it is to commit by resolution what the rates are going to be charged in order to pay those loans back. And the original format was set up for rates to begin to increase in January of 2017 and to go up each year over a five-year period until they would just sort of settle into a flat rate increase every year, which is all designed to build, to build a nest egg of reserve money so that as infrastructure gets old, you can replace it without having to go out and get more loans and stretch yourself thin on loans. So, the, the town adopted that rate structure back in 2016. But as we've talked about before, for a variety of reasons, the elected body did not move forward with those rate increases. Some of it had to do with the fact that there were delays in doing the Chester Water Project, which enabled us to basically kick the can down the road on the rate increases. In addition to that, we were also coming out of the tail end of, you know, some troubling economy and difficult times for our citizens in general. And we're talking about before any economic developments. So, the idea was, let's again try to leverage our resources. Every year, look to prioritize and find better and more efficient ways to spend our money and delay those increases. Well, what you're gonna see in the budget here is we can no longer continue to delay those increases. So, this year's resolution makes mention of a resolution that was passed previously where we're gonna need to raise the water rate, I believe it's 16%, and the sewer rates 12% here. So, that basically comes down to, I think it's a little under a dollar per thousand gallons on the water side and a little, I believe, about a dollar and a half on the sewer side. And again, it's always important, important to put that in perspective is that our average customer uses 5,000 gallons a month of water. So, you divide that by 1,000, that's five billing increments. So, when you're raising the rate a dollar and a half, Dave, you're the math. What's that, like $7?
$7.50.
Yeah. So, although the percentages are higher, and by no means we wanna, you know, just lump everybody into a thing of saying, hey, it's not that big a deal because we do understand that it is a big deal to many folks. And that again is why the elected body is delaying making these rate increases and until the timing was a little bit better. And now, we're to the point where we do need to move forward. The timing is a little bit better.
Calvin, can I also say that was another thing where you work on all the budget. We found money to reduce the real estate tax.
Yes.
So, that we weren't raising two things.
Yes.
It kind of will help balance things out for people.
Yes, that's exactly right.
While so many other areas are raising.
Yes.
Trash, water, sewer, and property tax.
Yes. Yes, that is correct. So, on the water side, and the other thing that we are doing, which was not the original intent, but we are also, the impact fees that we are collecting on new construction, typically, you would take those impact fees and you would put them in your reserve funds to build up your rainy day. So, if you look on line nine under the water fund, you're gonna see $24,000 worth of impact fees on the water that we are putting into the cash flow equation. And that basically is $24,000 that instead of putting it in the rainy day fund down the road, that we're putting it into the cash flow now so that it's more manageable. The rate increases can be a little bit more manageable and we can, we can close any kind of gaps over a longer period of time instead of trying to do it in one, one swoop at one time. And again, this, this $24,000 is hypothetically a very low estimate with what we're hearing in terms of developers and what they wanna do. Those numbers are gonna be probably higher. And I guess what I would want to caution is, we don't want to get into the habit of taking those impact fees and using them as cash flow because one of the reasons why the town had to go out on these large loans because they didn't have any reserve funds. And that is the double-edged sword that you folks face as legislators and shepherds of the community is the balance between generating enough money to have a rainy day fund for things that are naturally going to happen as opposed to raising rates too high at the same time. And so, unfortunately, in the past, the town spent literally many decades without raising its water and sewer rate. And it accomplished keeping the rate very low compared to other communities. But unlike other communities, there were no reserve funds to be able to do anything. So, this is a model that we're juggling a lot of things. But one of the things we're juggling is to leave the next generation of town residents that are gonna be sitting in these seats, making decisions in years to come to give them more resources than what this board and prior boards had available to them when they came in. So, we're, we're trying to reach a compromise here of keeping rates affordable while at the same time trying to build up reserve funds at the same time. So, you're gonna see in both the water and sewer side, we are, we're, we're bankrolling the impact fees for at least this year. There, there are some big projects that we're looking to do. I talked about Wilson Road, Wilson Avenue. Why do I keep saying Wilson Road? Wilson Avenue of relocating that water line down there. So, we have some money, that's where you're seeing some money set aside for contracted services to start replacing some of the water lines in town. We're not gonna be able to do a large amount on our piggy bank. The goal is now that we've gotten some of the big hurdles out of the way, that we can start reapplying to MDE and maybe even the USDA on some water quality grants to try to get more money to be able to take care of water lines. You know, no one sitting up here is ignorant to the fact that we have a very old infrastructure. We have areas that still experience brown water. We have areas that have undersized water lines. We're aware of that. But again, we're going back to where does the money come from to be able to do that? So, we're trying to pick away if there's a little out of time here. So, there's, the big things in here are water infrastructure upgrades. When you get to the end of the, end of the line here, we have some reserve funds and monies that are left over from the USDA project that we are able to re-channel back into some of this water infrastructure. And so, what you're seeing here is we have a balanced budget on the water fund that is balanced $5,257.80 to the positive, but that's also based on reserve fund transfers to pay for those things. It's not, in other words, what we collected in water rates is not going to cover these infrastructure repairs that we want to make. So, we are starting to go into a little bit of our reserve funds and also utilizing some of the savings that we had in the Chester Water Line to be able to redirect some monies into, into the water side. So, we have a balanced budget, but I want to make sure everybody understands that's balanced based on some reserve, technically, some reserve fund transfers and some leftover loan proceeds. based on some reserve, technically some reserve fund transfers and some leftover loan proceeds.
Calvin, why do we have the depreciation on here, given it's a cash flow budget?
Because we, we show the depreciation, but if you see the exercise at the end, we zero it out.
I saw that, but, I mean, I, I thought we had taken it out of the, because we made this into the cash, I know the whole discussion years ago about this, and I thought we'd taken it out and called this.
No, I never, we've never taken the depreciation out, only because, to some degree, this also becomes a general entry document.
Yeah.
Now for our folks, and the depreciation is shown.
Yeah, but it's.
In these line items.
On that, a similar note to that, why is the depreciation significantly under budget? Because, I mean, it should be straight-line depreciation pretty much, which means that if we expected to depreciate, I mean, depreciation's all counting.
No, I, I, we had this discussion today, I had the first reaction.
Okay.
We would, we were anticipating the Chester Water Line being completed and settled. And because you don't have to start tracking the depreciation until it is completely done, although it is structurally done, we've not settled with U S D A yet.
Right, right, right.
On it, so that's why it's under. The year-to-date numbers are under.
And I see the depreciation on sewer plant about matches, okay.
Yeah.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
So on the sewer side, well, let me go back up on the water side. If you take note of line eighty-three, contracted services, we have been looking to reorganize the way we're using personnel also. So there's a line item in there for that, for that purpose. On the sewer side, the, there's really no big expenditures, we have a brand-new wastewater treatment plant, so we're starting to ratchet up a little bit more money set aside to take care of, you know, a building that's now three years older, but it's not significantly large amounts of money there. Also, I'm sorry if I back up, because I know Commissioner Oakenry was always interested in this, we do have money to replace the roof over at the water plant, but I wanna keep that number fluid, because I'm really starting to raise a question on why we would even bother putting a roof on that smaller building when we're talking about relocating the public works garage to the sewer plant, the fuel pumps could come down there so we could save about ten thousand dollars, I think it was, and we could just level that little brick building that's sitting there.
Now, we've been, we've been talking about that little building for almost four years.
I know, but.
And let me, let me say what I wanna say about this, because it's the last time I'm gonna say it. I've been afraid the whole time that that rotted roof and that lean-to over that fuel tank is gonna collapse when somebody's there getting fuel, and that's gonna be very expensive. So you, we, we waited this long, nothing's been done, just, I'm afraid that's what's gonna happen to it. Yeah, now that we got the Chester Water and we don't use that, but still, right there in the middle of the town park, right in the middle of town, it looks terrible.
So that's, that's why I'm suggesting, instead of investing a lot of money into something that hypothetically we don't need, let's just get it out of there completely.
Yeah, it's safer now to take it down, as you said.
With that said, with that said, I still have a placeholder in the budget.
Yeah, well, we've.
To do the entire thing.
We've placed holders, it's several years now, but I think now we're at the point where it's better, it's safer now to go ahead and take it down before, before it falls on somebody standing there getting fuel, because we're not gonna be moving the fuel tank in the very near future. But that, that's a safety. I was out walking the other night, the gate was open, so I walked down and looked at it, I wouldn't get close to it. I've noticed even the officers are like pulling around sideways, so if it falls this way, they're out of the way.
So going back to the sewer side here, we are balanced to the positive, all the way down at the bottom, by a hundred and seventy-two dollars and fifty-eight cents. And again, that's relying on fund balance transfers to pay for some of, some of the one-time expenditures there. The point being, and we've talked about this in the past, and this is an exercise for the residents to understand too, that we are very similar to a household. And we are, we are, we are balancing paving streets, fixing water lines, doing all that stuff, providing some community events for people so they feel good about their community. And we are, we're starting to see it turn in a positive way, but we really should have, as a rule of thumb, I say this every year, you should have about a year and a half worth of your operating cost in reserve. So if you look at our operating costs for the sewer plant at being just under two million dollars, you know, that means we should really have about three million dollars of reserve that's, you know, set aside for your rainy day fund. Now, I'm not gonna sit here and suggest that every community is able to do that, but and even personally in our own households, we might not have that, but that is something to shoot for, and that's something that we're always trying to do here, is to build those reserve funds. But the way to do that is to be able to balance your budget with hundreds of thousands of dollars in the positive. But we can't, we can't do that without overtaxing our residents or over service-charging our residents. That's why we gotta continue to invest in the infrastructure to grow the community, to get, you know, better investments in property in town with, you know, bigger and brighter and better businesses and properties and, and housing stock and stuff like that. So it's gonna take some time, but I just wanna remind everybody that under the normal course of business, you wanna be balancing your budget with bigger soplas than what we are. But that's what we've been dealing with for the last ten, ten years.
Right.
Here, and we've always managed to keep it going positive.
Calvin, question, line fifty-eight on the sewer, you know, remember when we, the first year we fired that thing up, we, we were sticker-shocked at the electric bill that we found out that it was gonna cost to run that plant.
Yeah.
Is that what that eighty-nine is?
Yeah, that's, that's the straight electric cost.
That looks like it's come down some though, because I think it was over a hundred the first year, a hundred thousand dollars.
Well, one of the things that we have done in the sewer and water fund is, and it primarily hinges around my role, in, in terms of, and let, let's just say that sort of like I'm the poster child in terms of what administratively we've had to do to rebuild the wastewater treatment plant, and then the water plant, meaning that we used to have a higher percentage of everyday expenses in the general administration side would get charged to the sewer side because we were spending so much time on the sewer side. So to give you a perfect example about that, a good example of that, our copy machine, in years past, we did not charge a whole lot of money to sewer and water for the copies because we were using the little postcards, and Wagner's was producing that utility billing for us. Now that we are going to the eight-and-a-half by eleven and we're putting all the different information in there, our copying cost is going up significantly, and the bulk of that is for the sewer and water utility bills. So we are, we change the percentages every year based upon what the needs are. So my point is, to some degree, the electrical cost, to some degree, is coming down a little bit as a reflection of how we're reallocating things that are happening in the town, and the way the resources are utilized to take care of the different departments. So that is the proprietary fund. So at that point, if there's no other questions, it just comes down to the resolution itself. In reading the resolution into the record.
Good.
Is that something you, you want me to read the resolution?
You want to? Good.
Okay. All right, so, resolution two thousand nineteen oh four, a resolution adopting an annual budget for the fiscal year July first, two thousand nineteen through June thirty, two thousand twenty, and authorizing collection of taxes here and levying assessing service charges and appropriating funds for the fiscal year. Whereas the Town of Rising Sun, this is a standard boilerplate, I won't drag it out, whereas chapter ninety of the code is what establishes our, the responsibility of assessing charges and doing budgets, that's what that section is saying. Whereas the town has received notice from the Maryland Department of Assessment and Taxation that the final taxable net assessable real property base for the Town of Rising Sun will increase by roughly six million three hundred and sixteen thousand two hundred and sixteen dollars. And with the previously adopted tax rate reduction from point zero four eight per one hundred dollars of assessed value to point zero four seven per one hundred dollars of assessed value will result at a total projected real estate tax revenue of nine hundred and seventeen thousand two hundred and twenty-nine dollars and fifty-three cents in real estate tax revenue, of which the town will project to collect roughly nine hundred, nine hundred and three thousand four hundred and seventy-one dollars and nine cents, and will use this number for budget calculations. And whereas the town has worked very hard to keep expenses in line with the realities of the revenue that is collected, and has carefully monitored expenses over the past ten years, and successfully reduced such expenses while funding important community initiatives, but equally important lowering the tax rate for our residents. And whereas the Town of Rising Sun, like other small municipalities, provides basic services such as, as street and sidewalk maintenance, parks, trash collection, and other amenities to our residents. However, Rising Sun is, is rather unique in the amount of other services that are provided through the real estate revenues, and despite the decline in revenues as detailed above, the town will continue to provide daily police patrols and protection, weekly trash and recycling and yard waste collection, and bulk pickup services, movies in the park, Sun Fest, Spooktacular, Color Fun Run, Shop with the Cop, Tiger Trot, Little League Parade, Carol Sing, and other family fun activities, all while still maintaining the second lowest real estate tax burden per resident in Cecil County, as well as the second lowest monthly charge for sewer and water services, and the sixth lowest charge for sewer and water services based upon average customer usage. And whereas the mayor and commissioners will continue their commitment to keeping expenses for our residents as low as possible, to include a freeze on the current tax rates and continued discounts for early and timely payments while maintaining the town's financial position and preserving town services as much as possible by way of prudent, prudent financially sound investments in the infrastructure, equipment, and resources. Whereas, and to that end, the mayor and commissioners have developed an annual operating budget for primary government and proprietary fund activities for fiscal year two thousand nineteen, and attached here and to. And whereas the primary government has a balanced budget with a small surplus projected in the government funds of fifteen thousand four hundred and twelve dollars and fifty-six cents, and a balanced budget for the proprietary funds by way of reserve fund transfers. And whereas this budget will be based upon the following already established tax rates and service charges as follows. The tax rate for all real property not otherwise exempted and located within the corporate limits of the Town of Rising Sun was previously reduced from point zero four eight for each one hundred dollars of assessed value to a new rate of point zero four seven for each one hundred dollars of assessed value. That was resolution two thousand nineteen dash oh three, previously adopted on April twenty-third, two thousand nineteen. The Cecil County Department of Finance will collect the real property and debt service and utility tax on behalf of the Town of Rising Sun. The town will continue to provide a two percent discount upon payment in full of any real property tax if taxes are paid in full by the end of July two thousand eighteen, and a one percent penalty each month for any payments received after October first of two thousand eighteen, and until the balance is paid in full. If I can stop for one second, the county collects the taxes for all the towns, but I believe we are one of only two that are still providing the two percent discount if you pay your taxes early. So it's another effort that we do to try to help people reduce their, their costs if they're in a position to be able to pay their, their taxes in full by July. Such taxes on land and improvement shall be computed on the value of said properties as certified to the, to the Town of Rising Sun by the Maryland State Department of Assessments. Number four, the tax rate for all tangible personal property, business, utilities, or contract carriers operating in the corporate limits of the Town of Rising Sun shall remain at zero point nine zero per one hundred of assessed value of all tangible operating personal property, including commercial inventory. In computing and levying such taxes on tangible personal property, the valuation of said properties as certified to the Town of Rising Sun by the Maryland State Department of Assessment shall be used as the assessed valuation of tangible personal property. The town will maintain the existing flat three hundred and eighty-four dollars and thirty-six cents debt service and utility tax assessment on real property that is currently developed, who is vacant and not developed, but can be developed in accordance to the town's zoning code, unless such properties are declared non-developable and currently exempt as spelled out in resolution two thousand sixteen dash ten. The purpose of this assessment is to cover the costs related to debt service financing of the town, building, parks, and property, past utility upgrades, vehicle, streets, and sidewalk restorations, regardless of the types of services provided, the level of service or the lack thereof. This assessment will be reflected on the annual real property tax bill issued by the county, and will be subject to the same discounts and penalty fees as real property tax. Number seven, some revenue projections, as shown in this budget, are related to fees as indicated in the town's current fee schedule, as set by resolution from time to time by the Board of Commissioners. Number eight, resolution two thousand sixteen dash thirteen, adopted on September thirteenth, two thousand sixteen, detailed a five-year phase-in rate to take effect in January of two thousand seventeen. As discussed previously, the mayor and commissioners initially delayed these stepped increases due to delays in construction, timing of loan payments, and to help our residents during the previously struggling economy. The second phase of this rate increase was scheduled to take effect on January first, two thousand eighteen, but will be initiated during the fiscal year two thousand nineteen budget cycle. This phase of a rate increase calls for a sixty percent, sixteen percent increase for water service and a twelve percent increase for sewer service. In addition to paying the long-term debt on the water and sewer infrastructures, the town budget currently calls for over five hundred thousand dollars of existing water line upgrades aimed at improving water quality for our residents. The new rates will take effect with the August first water bills. Discounts for early payment of utility bills, failure to pay utility bills, building permits and other service fees due to the town will continue to be spelled out in the town's adopted fee schedule, which can be amended from time to time by resolution of the mayor and commissioners. Therefore, being enacted in resolve that the mayor and commissioners of the Town of Rising Sun wish to adopt and propose two thousand nineteen dash two thousand twenty annual budget to include the tax rates and service charges as set forth above. I'd also, again, I think it's real important to bring this back around, in addition to having to make the hard-line choices, the Town of Rising Sun does think outside the box. We do give people discounts for paying their utility bills early, no other community does that. We're still doing the two percent discount if you pay your bills, your real estate bill and your debt service, you know, fees ahead of time. So in addition to raising these things, you know, that we have to do, we're also trying to promote people being able to pay those bills at a timely manner and actually getting a benefit for paying those bills at a timely manner. Again, I think it's important to note that in addition to these, the bills that have to be paid, when people fall behind, especially in the utility bills, we are the only community that, that recognizes payment plans and suspends late penalty fees. Other communities have late penalty fees, but we, and we do also, but we suspend them when we offer people and they take us up on a, a payment plan. So again, this is a, it's an attempt to make a well-rounded, balanced effort to provide the services that our, our residents need in the community.
Calvin, could I have one question though? Because in reading this, if you go back to item one, when it starts into whereas this budget says, should that rate 0.47?
No. I was going to say the same thing. It's, there's a typo. It should be .48 and .47.
Yeah. The, the decimal point needs to be moved over and probably a dollar sign put outside.
Yeah, I, I was actually going to point that out. So, that was exactly, I was saying.
You called us before this, and it said anything.
Yeah. So, in item one, and also in the paragraph, the first, third paragraph, fourth paragraph, anywhere where it says .4, .048, .047, it should be .48, .47. That'd be like collecting $94 on a $200,000 property instead of $940.
You know where that comes from is, it's the same thing the state does when they do their calculations on the assessment. They add the zero in front of it to make it all work.
They, because they think they do it based on different, like, we do it based on 100. And if you did that based on 10, that would be, I think they do point, you do it based on, no, they don't. I know, I know what you mean, but it's, yeah, it should, that extra zero shouldn't be there. And scroll up. There's another paragraph. Oh.
Well, I did the, I did number one.
Okay. That was up at the very top.
Yeah, keep going back to the first page.
Very top. Very good. In that big paragraph there.
Which starts out, whereas the town has received notice from Maryland Department of Assessments.
The fat paragraph there.
We good?
Yep.
Calvin, you have anything else to add?
Right.
Okay. Can we get a motion to?
I make a motion, we adopt Resolution 2019-4, the 2019, 2020 budget for the Town of Rising Sun.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved and second. Any further questions or discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Pass unanimously. Calvin, you have anything else while we're on the business side of meetings? Anything else in that? Citizens input? Bill? Tom? Jane?
We have a lot of questions, but we don't have enough time.
Well, there's a lot of things that we need to discuss.
I'm sorry.
I don't understand some of the stuff that many of you, I mean.
Discuss afterwards.
There's so many things.
Bill, when you get, get a moment, give a, get a list, it's, then it can be explained. You'll understand what we're saying.
Yeah, it is detailed. We've been doing it for so long now, I'm finally starting to pick it up, and I'm a mechanic, so.
If I can say this from when I first started, we were handed a budget on two sheets of paper, and that's how you voted on the budget. It was never, never as detailed as this, and you, we really had no idea where money was being spent, quite honestly, back then.
Commissioner.
You know, you've got to make sure, which I don't do well. So, I just got a quick write something.
It's now 23 pages instead of two.
Well, yeah, when you're on the, it's like, I got to take.
Chief, you have anything?
I actually want to, Jane, there was a key margin.
My report's going to be brief, but I wanted to make sure that the board was aware of a couple of things. First, our first new officer, William Townsend, will be finishing his field training this week, and he'll be out on his own. That's a big step for that young man. I hope there's going to be good things and positive things that we can see come forth from him. Also, during the 4th of July weekend, we put together an enforcement effort that covered that 48-hour period that we actually worked, and the officers came up with three arrests for second-degree assault, three fugitives from other areas, one arrest for marijuana, and 39 traffic stops. So, that pretty much made it one stop per hour when they weren't busy with the other stuff, which let the citizens in the Town of Rising Sun and the neighboring areas know that we're here, we're going to be enforcing laws as normal, and we're going to continue to make this a safe place for the citizens of Rising Sun. And that's my report, unless there's any questions.
I appreciate that last thing you said there, that you and your team are making this a safe place to live, and I've seen it in the years I've been here, and it's, it's recognized out there that this is a safe area, and I think your team, and you deserve a lot of credit for that, chief.
Thank you, sir.
One, one of the, chief, you and I talked about it, and we deal with this every year. At some point in time, I'm not saying we have to change anything, but I think there are, there are subject matters that come up that every couple of years you have to revisit the subject matter, and one of those is fireworks, because we get bombarded by the complaints about fireworks. And for every person who just gives myself or the chief the riot act on why something's not happening, there's two people that appear to be in favor of them. And so, at some point in time, I think there, there are some places, there's a Maryland law on what you could do, but there are communities that have adopted more stringent places. There's large cities that have adopted. I'm pretty sure that the city of Houston in Texas, Texas has an anti, you know, you can't even light anything off in it. So, I'm not sitting here advocating one way or the other, but we get a lot of angry people around that, around that time period that want to know why we're not doing something.
Believe me, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, I got more complaints, you know. In fact, one lady called me at 10:15 Sunday night because somebody lit a firecracker off, and it worked her dog up. Now, I'm not saying that's right, but you're right, we have to deal with something. One problem that I, I saw in my area was the noise and the fireworks, but they were outside of town.
Yeah.
And I tried explaining that to the, to the person. I could see them, hear them, but I knew where they were coming from, and there was, we did not have jurisdiction over there.
And there's no way that state police and sheriff's office can enforce all fireworks going, no, we can't.
One of the major problems we experience on holidays, like the 4th of July and New Year's when fireworks are typically set off, the volume of calls we get. And Commissioner Pearson is correct, a lot will be outside of the town limits of Rising Sun, but those that are in, we could be on one side of town dealing with the issue there and get five calls on the other side of town. We get there and deal with that issue, and they're back going at it on the other side. So, we're chasing rabbits that entire night to deal with fireworks. And to be quite frank with you, I don't see any possible way to deal with it until we do enforce, you know, have more stringent laws related to them.
True.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, chief. Calvin, you have anything else under staff reports?
Um, no, I'm good. I, I talked tonight.
Okay. The mayor's not here tonight, so we'll move on to commissioners' reports. Commissioner Braun, you have anything?
No, I have nothing.
Commissioner Warren?
I, since the mayor's not here, if you'd like to speak, okay.
Actually, I have nothing for tonight. Thank you.
Commissioner Pearson? The only thing I really want to bring up is the Little League, well, I guess it's the Little League representing our town and singing the National Anthem when it wasn't being played. It just says a lot about our town. They, they did it on their own, and it must have been incredible to see these young, these young men uphold what we consider a, a, a pretty big standard here. That's, that's all I have.
I just want to touch on a couple of things. Anybody knows now, been watching these, I, I've been on a soapbox about the yard waste pickup. That's, that's a nice service we have in this town. It's expensive. The, you know, the town covers it. So, when you're, just make sure when you're putting your yard waste out, that you're going by the rules that we've sent out of what's, what's acceptable, what's unacceptable. Judy is always putting that flyer out in the water bills. And another thing that's become a big expense in this town that we have to take ownership of as, as residents is trash and recycling. We've put out some guideline flyers of what's acceptable, especially the recycling. When we were in Ocean City, I was talking to commissioners from Chesapeake City, and we had almost the same discussion with the contracts for trash and recycling. That's becoming a big expense for us municipalities. Residents have to make sure they follow guidelines, put the proper stuff in recycling, because if it winds up going in the trash, it costs us more money, and we can't look at continuing to be able to lower some prices and expenses in towns and taxes with our, if we don't control what our trash costs to us, and particularly our recycling. So, Judy, if you can send those guidelines out again sometime this summer, and put them on your refrigerator, and look at them, and, and watch what you can put in recycling and what you can't. They are good guidelines, and the landfill is getting more expensive. I was there this past weekend. It's, it's getting expensive, and we have to, we have to deal with that. We can't control that. But we can't control what we throw away and what we put in recycle, so please be responsible with that. And that's all I have. Let's see what kind of announcements we got. So, upcoming meetings, we have a planning commission workshop on Monday, July 22nd, 6:30 PM. Next town meeting, Tuesday, July 23rd. Next holiday coming up, September. We're already talking about September. And before you know it, we'll be talking about school supply drives and stuff too.
Actually, they started that.
It started.
What can you tell us, what can you tell us about it?
None of the people who give a dollar.
Yeah. I know that they were collecting, there was a bunch came in today.
I know. I know, that was one thing.
A non-honest person who delivered a lot today.
I saw some stuff downstairs, and we know Lisa Tome used to be a big trumper of school supplies and stuff, so it won't be long before the kids are going back to school again. So, it's never too early to start. But, okay. So, with that said, motion to adjourn?
So, moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.